The Monday, June 28th, 2021 Regular Meeting of the City of Paris. City Council is hereby called to order at 5:30 PM. For the purposes of this meeting, there is a quorum of the council present. Jean Anderson will deliver the invocation and the Pledge of Allegiance will be led by Mayor Protem Hughes. Please rise.
May we pray? Heavenly Father, as always, we thank you, first of all, for your many blessings upon this nation. We pray, Father, tonight, for our government leaders, Father, on every level, national, state, and local, that you would guide them and give them wisdom, Father, on the decisions that they make. We pray especially for our council tonight, as they make many important decisions at this meeting. We just ask, Father, that we would glorify you in all that we do, for asking in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen.
(Inaudible) allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please be seated. Item number four is the Citizens Forum. Persons desiring to address the council must limit their presentation to no more than two minutes. Unless an item is posted on the agenda, the Texas Open Meetings Act prohibits the council from responding to any comments other than to refer the matter to a future agenda, to an existing policy, or to a staff person with specific factual information. Claims against the city, council members, or employees, as well as individual personal appeals, are not appropriate for Citizens Forum. If necessary, the City Council may convene into executive session under Chapter 551 of the Texas Government Code regarding any item on this agenda. The public forum is now open. If there's anyone who wishes to address the council, please state your name and address for the record, and please speak directly into the microphone.
How you doing? My name is Derek Hughes. I live at 627 Fifth Street Northeast. I was coming up, item number 17. Would that be a public discussion, or should we just address it in a two-minute form? To keep from wasting time.
If you'd like to go ahead and address it right now is fine.
Okay, so that's about renaming the park after Ms. Joan Mathis. Of course, currently now, the park is named Martin Luther King Jr. Park, and I think a lot of people in the city are just now finding that out, even though it was done in 1989. A lot of people was concerned about taking Dr. Martin Luther King's name off of it, but I feel that Dr. Martin Luther King did a lot of work, and his work was for a person like Ms. Joan Mathis to be able to do what she did here in the city of Paris. Everybody knows Ms. Mathis and her body of work. So I think it would be an honor to him if her name was placed on that park, where she's dedicated her entire body life of work here in the city, helping elderly, youth, and everybody, and still working right today. So I think that, I know it's a toss-up because of Dr. Martin Luther King's name and racial differences and everything, but I think if Dr. Martin Luther King had his choice, I think he wouldn't mind a person like Ms. Joan Mathis taking his place, his name's place off there and putting hers. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hughes. Anyone else wishing to speak?
Good evening. I am Janice Liner Mosley. I reside at 4100 Goforth Kilgore, Texas. I'm here on a matter regarding my aunt who lived here many, many years ago, the Reverend George A. Jones and Fleta B. Jones. I received notification, I am an educator, so during the time of the panemdemic, I could not address those needs. So I'm here today to assess what needs to be done. I do have interested buyers for that 473 North Fifth Street residence. I do have in mind to clean it up, with time being the summertime, and due to remote learning, asynchronous and synchronous, I have to get my mind set. So I wanted that to be made known, because I did receive notification from Mr. Tally that they had in mind to demolish it. Well, please do not do that, because I have had several buyers that are interested in that particular residence. So with that being said, I appreciate making this forum aware of what my intentions are, and I had taken the time to do this amidst everything else that we all are trying to catch up with. So with being a teacher, I need that time to be able to complete that, but I will have that cleaned up, and I will sell it. So for those matters, I want it known. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Anyone else?
My name is Brenda Cherry. I live at 1442 Fitzhugh Avenue. I'm here to speak about the possibility of the City Council removing Martin Luther King's name from the Martin Luther King Park and replacing it with Ms. Mathis. Ms. Mathis is a beautiful, kind-hearted woman who spends a great portion of her time doing for others. Ms. Mathis was my English teacher at PJC when I was 18, and I'm 63 now. Twenty years later, she was one of my daughter's English teachers. Ten years later, she was my son's English teacher. She was the kind of teacher whose students didn't have to reach out to her for help if they were having problems. She would reach out to them. She deserves to be honored, but it should not be done by removing Martin Luther King's name from the park. There are many things that can be named after Ms. Mathis. She can be honored all kinds of ways. This issue has caused a lot of unnecessary drama in the community, at least on Facebook or through Facebook. Removing Martin Luther King's name from a park is not the look the City Council should want for the city of Paris. We have so many race issues that have made national news. We're fighting for, we're still fighting for some of the things Martin Luther King gave his life for, including voting rights. Martin Luther King, John Lewis, and hundreds of others marched from Selma to Alabama across that Etlin Pettus Bridge in 1965, which led to the Voting Rights Act of 1965. The Paris City Council considering removing Martin Luther King's name from a park while at the same time, there is a tribute to white supremacy in the form of a Confederate-
Your two minutes are up. I'll give you just a few more seconds to wrap up, Ms. Cherry, please.
In the form of a Confederate statue on the Lamarck County Courthouse grounds with the determination by some local public officials that it will never be relocated to a more proper place. I know that's not the city, but the city could speak on that if they wanted to.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Cherry, very much.
Can I say one last thing?
Yes.
The council should decide this based on what's best for the public, not how many people show up here to speak on it, because Paris is, what, almost 25,000 people? And so a few handfuls should not decide.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak?
Good afternoon. My name is Monica Yates. I am at 1815 Majestic Drive. Again, on the matter of Ms. Mathis, I'm going to concur with what Brenda Cherry said. I feel like, as of now, with the national news as it is, it would look very bad for the city of Paris to make that change from Martin Luther King to Ms. Mathis. Like she said, there's very, there's a lot of different places within Paris that we could look at during the meeting that we had on June, what, 19th? We met with the city manager, and voices were heard, people were able to speak their opinions. There was discussion of possibly renaming a street, actually, the possibility of renaming two streets. There was a talk of possibly partnering with PJC to name a building or a riding lab, which would actually go towards the legacy of Ms. Mathis. She did not just affect the city of Paris, she reached out, she taught international students, she taught here locally, but she, I mean, she touched many more lives than just what the street, or the, not street, pardon me, what the park would touch. So in regards to what Ms. Cherry said, I do agree that Ms. Mathis deserves something more, and I feel like the city should consider other opportunities versus naming Martin Luther King Park, renaming it to Joan Mathis Park. Everybody here that has ever been a part or have been connected with Ms. Mathis knows that she is an amazing woman who's touched many lives, more so than just education, but just the community as well. And so I really feel like we should, as a community, consider other options versus Martin Luther King Park. Thanks.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak?
Hi, Samantha Hughes, 627 Fifth Street Northeast, Paris, Texas. I came up to speak on the matter about the park for being named Joan Mathis. I don't think that'd be dishonoring Martin Luther King, because he always, he already has that road, and I think that would be easier to do, to put a park in her name than a road or a street. And I'm for Joan Mathis being put on the park. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Hughes. Anyone else?
Kimberly Stone, 1820 Majestic Drive. Martin Luther King is a historical figure, so replacing his name with a citizen, whether it's dishonoring or not, I don't think it would be a smart thing to do. He is the reason, well, one of the reasons, he stood for the reason that all of us are able to be here together. He stood for, you know, to bring blacks and whites in all other races together, so if it weren't for him fighting for all of us, we might not even be here today, who knows where we would be. But he had a strong fight for that, and I feel like we should, I mean, the street, the park is off of Martin Luther King Street, it's just one street over, so the park being Martin Luther King Park matches since the street is right in front of it. So it's, the park is just one street off of it, and it's right behind it. So I think that's a great fit, because there's not many landmarks where else he, where he's represented anywhere else. So I think that leaving that Martin Luther King Park would be a great justice, and giving a citizen anything else would be fine with me, or I'm sure with anybody else, because Joan Mathis is a great person. But he's a historical figure, and I wouldn't want to take that from him. Thanks.
Thank you, Ms. Stone. Any further speakers? Seeing none, I'll close that Section A of the Citizens Forum. Section B is recognition of Yolanda Robbins Reeves for her outstanding organization of the Juneteenth Parade. Mayor Protem Hughes, and I believe Chief Salter.
Where'd he go?
Coming around.
Here we go. Okay, my name is, I feel like I should be facing the other way, but my name is Richard Salter. I'm the chief of police here with the city of Paris. I want to thank City Council, Mayor Portugal, Mayor Protem Hughes, and City Manager Grayson Path for allowing me this distinct honor to recognize Ms. Yolanda Reeves. Ms. Reeves, could you please join me up here? So I met Ms. Reeves, here, I'm gonna get on this side, Mr. Hughes, get on this side. I met Ms. Reeves June, the morning of June 19th, Saturday morning, at the kickoff of the Juneteenth Parade, and when I got there, I walked around and talked to some people, and I said, "Well, who's in charge? Who's in charge?" And they kept saying, "Well, that would be Ms. Reeves." "Ms. Reeves," and I'm like, "Well, where is she?" They said, "She's everywhere." And they said, "The only way you're gonna find her, she's in a pink t-shirt." And so I was scanning, and I would see her, and I'd start going that direction, right? She'd be around the corner, went around the corner, she was gone. I'd look back, she's another 300 yards over this way. She was, she was everywhere, she was in charge, she was giving directions, she was helping people, she put this parade together. I know how difficult it is to plan things and to get that many, I think it was 200 people or more. If you guys have never done this, to organize something with that many people, that's a lot of work, and it takes a leader to do it. And so I saw leadership in Ms. Reeves, right away. I tried to hire her to the police department, but she told me, "No."[903.00][903.00](Laughter) So I'm gonna read this for you. So Ms. Reeves, "On behalf of the citizens of Paris, Texas, we would like to recognize you and present you for your leadership and hard work, dedication to making the Juneteenth Parade a celebration, a community success."
Thank you.
So, you're welcome. So we'd like to present you with this certificate.
Can we turn this way?
Yes.[934.12][934.12](Applause)
Can I say something real quick? I just want to let everybody know, working on Juneteenth and MLK Parade, I don't do it by myself. I have a team, PHP, and two of them is here, Samantha, or three of them, Shakara and David Hill. And also, my mom and my sister always backed me, so I always have support. So I want to recognize them, too.[967.23][967.23](Applause)
Thank you, Ms. Reeves. Item 4C is to recognize Don Yarborough and the wield workers of Lamarck County, and he is out of town at this time, so I would like to table that until he can be here. Could I have a motion to table that?
Boofed.
Thank you, and a second?
Second.
All those in favor of tabling this issue say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say no. Motion carries unanimously. Items on the consent agenda are approved by a single action of the council, with such approval applicable to all items appearing on the consent agenda. A council member may request any item be removed from the consent agenda and considered as a separate item. Does any member wish to remove an item from the agenda? If not, is there a motion to approve all items on the consent agenda?
I make the motion that we approve the consent agenda.
Thank you, Mr. Savage. Is there a second?
A second.
Thank you. Is there, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no. Carries unanimously. Item number 16, on the regular agenda, discuss, conduct a public hearing, and act on an ordinance considering the petition of the city of Paris, Texas, for a map amendment from a central area district to a commercial district between Pine Bluff, Graham, Northwest Third, and Northwest, Northeast Third Street. Is there a presentation, Mr. Mack?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of council. This is initiative that's before the City Council this evening, on behalf of the Planning Commission, twofold, in attempt to further implement the city's approved comprehensive plan, and to also further address a character of the central area district that is outside of the main loop on property, that is bordered north of Pine Bluff, Graham Street, and between Northwest Third and Northeast Third Street, rezoning to commercial from central area. There are a number of parcels involved in this. Planning Commission reviewed this at a public hearing at their last meeting, and has unanimously recommended that the City Council approve this. So staff is recommending approval of an ordinance before this evening, rezoning, amending the city's zoning map for these properties this evening, and I'll be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Any questions?
I had a quick question. So I know in our, in our agenda packet, we did have someone that spoke in favor of, but were there any, anyone that had any concerns or any negative feedback on this at all?
Excellent question, Councilmember Pankah. No. Just, just full support.
Further questions? All right, the public hearing is now open. For anyone wishing to speak on this item, please state your name and address. All right, seeing no one to speak, I will close the public hearing. Any further questions or discussion? If there's no further discussion, the chair will hear a motion on this item.
I'll go ahead and make a motion to approve the ordinance as presented.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Pilgrim. It's been moved and seconded that we approve this item. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say no. Motion carries, seven zero. Item number 17, discuss and act on a resolution changing the name of Martin Luther King Jr. Park to the Joan Mathis Park. I need a motion to remove this item from the table before we can discuss.
Make a motion to remove this item from the table.
Thank you, Mr. Pilgrim, a second. A second has been received. All those in favor of bringing this off the table, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. Motion carries, seven zero. This item was tabled at the last meeting and will need to be discussed now. Councilmember Stone, would you like to start that discussion, please?
Yes, I tabled this motion because once we found out that the park wasn't Johnson Park or Seventeenth Street Park, and we became aware that it was Dr. Martin Luther King Park, I wanted the community's input on making a decision, a big decision for renaming the park. One of the citizens called for organizing a meeting. We met on Father's Day, Sunday at 5:00 at St. Paul Baptist Church, and all the community and my constituents were invited to this meeting. There were some city staff there as well, and after the conclusion of the meeting, it came to our attention that the majority of the community that was there at the meeting decided that they wanted to leave the park Dr. King, and we could work on other options for Ms. Mathis, we could work on the streets. We're also working on some other things that has nothing to do with the city to honor her. Again, this isn't nothing personal as far as it gives Ms. Mathis. Again, she was my teacher. I actually went to the riding lab and helped RN students write papers with her, 7:30 at night to 10:00 at night. The riding lab was a big part of her, school was, but taking someone else's name, such as Dr. King, we as Paris taken that name and just, you know, just because, there's a lot of people in Paris that do good things, you know, and again, not taking nothing from Ms. Mathis, because she is paying her dues and still paying her dues. She delivers meals, but guess what? Somebody else cooking those meals so she can deliver them. So we need to acknowledge those, too. I know a couple of women that help cook some meals that she deliver, so, which, you know, which is good. And what Joan does, she does not do it for show, she does not do it for recognition. But at the last meeting, we decided that we'll do a community meeting, and the community did come out, and they did decide, as a majority, to leave the park as Dr. King, my constituents and in the community. So that's what I want to go with, because it is in my district, and I will continue to work with the people who want to work with getting something else named in honor of Ms. Mathis.
Thank you. Further discussion?
Yes, I'd like to say something. It's not just in a district, that park is in the city of Paris, which represents all of us, we all have a say in that. I grew up playing in that park, even though I wasn't from Paris, so I used that park a lot, didn't even know that it was named Dr. Martin Luther King Park, as did, I mean, nobody really knew it was Dr. Martin Luther King Park. And so as far as, I think the biggest issue here is dishonoring Dr. King. I think that's the greatest issue, because everybody that spoke today, everybody that spoke on the, on the online poll that was put on Facebook, that was the concern, Dr. Martin Luther King Park, but the overwhelming majority of the citizens here, and not only the citizens here, but people that grew up here that has moved off, the overwhelming majority of them said that they would like to see this name changed. And the biggest concern is, nobody knew it was a Dr. Martin Luther King Park, so we was, we were not honoring Dr. Martin Luther King in the first place. So as far as dishonoring Dr. King, no, we're not, we can't dishonor Dr. King. Nobody in their right mind would do anything to dishonor Dr. King, and because his accomplishments are well-known all over the world, not just in the United States, not just in Texas, not just in Paris, Texas, but all over the world. And Dr. King did not fight and die for a name. He did not leave his wife and kids at home every night and day to go fight the civil rights movement for a name. He didn't care about putting his name on a wall, on a street, on a park. He was fighting for justice and equality, and I think it was stated earlier that Paris, Texas is known as a racist town. Well, yes, it's well documented in national newspapers that Paris is a racist city, whether it's so or not, whether you believe it or not, whether you share that opinion or not, that really doesn't matter. It's been documented, but because of his fight, the City Council, in what's so-called a racist city, is, the majority of that City Council is made up of minorities, because of his fight, because of what he did. He didn't, he didn't want you to name everything after him. He wanted to fight so that everybody's name would mean something, not just a Joan Mathis, not just Dr. Martin Luther King, but everybody's name would mean something, no matter what color, no matter what race, that everybody's name would mean something. And as far as honoring him, I think honoring Ms. Mathis in this way is honoring Dr. King, as somebody stated earlier in the comments, that it is honoring Dr. King. It's not dishonoring him because of what he fought for and what he stood for, and if you saw what he stood for, well, Joan Mathis is the epitome of standing for what Dr. Martin Luther King stood for. She stood, he stood for education, he stood for equal rights, and so did she. So we cannot dishonor Dr. King. I don't care what you do in this City Council, I don't care what other city does anything, you cannot dishonor Dr. King, but you can honor him by honoring people that he fought and died for. So that's actually honoring Dr. King. And as far as Ms. Joan Mathis, you won't find a better person to honor, that's, and it's been well stated, everybody that got up here and spoke stated that she is deserving. Everybody on the online poll said that she was deserving, and I'm saying it today, that she is deserving of an honor. Yes, we would like to have a building at PJC named after her or something, but that's not on the table right now. This park is on the table, and I think we should do this, and, and you know, just, just to, you know, we can come up with a thousand stories about Joan Mathis here today, but we don't have time for that, but just to share one story that I saw that stuck out with me years ago, when my daughter was doing her valedictory speech at Chisholm High School, Ms. Mathis came there with five young black girls and brought them, she didn't, she wasn't gonna tell them about what they can accomplish, she wanted to show them what they could accomplish, and she wanted them to see a black girl that could be the first black person that's valedictorian at Chisholm High School. She wanted them to see that thing, and she's done, anybody in Paris can get up and talk about all those type of stories, the things that she has done in this community. You know, we couldn't have a meeting long enough to talk about all the things that Ms. Mathis has done in this community. So, yeah, she's deserving of something better than the park, but the park is on the table right now, so we should go ahead and do this and stop putting it off. And then another thing, I just want to leave you with a quote from Dr. Martin Luther King himself. He said, "We are prone to judge success by the index of our salaries and the size of our automobiles, rather than by the quality of our service and our relationship to mankind." That epitomizes Joan Mathis, and I'll yield the floor at this point.
Thank you, Mr. Savage. Any other discussion or comments?
Again, I respect your opinion, but Dr. King, I can name a thousand and one things that he's done for, for not just Paris, but for, as, America as a whole. So it is, in my opinion, dishonoring him, taking a name away from this park and putting in a citizen's name. It is a dishonor, because he, like someone said in the audience, he, it's because of him that we all can sit up here together without, without being prejudiced against. And you brought the Facebook, I wasn't gonna bring up the Facebook, but since you did, the Facebook poll wasn't a tack poll. It was not supporting, it actually went away from Joan Mathis, and it was an attack on me, as a citizen and as a councilperson. I was called racial slurs, I was made fun of because of the color of my skin, yeah, the black community was making fun of the color of my skin, and I didn't want to bring that up. That's not what Dr. King stood for, and because of this item on this agenda, it brought out racists among the blacks in the community. And all I want to do is to acknowledge, we want to acknowledge Joan. I love Joan Mathis, but I don't want to take away from one icon- But I don't want to take away from one icon to give to another. And again, the Facebook, it was an attack tactic. It was not for Joan Mathis. It deterred from Joan Mathis. It, the Facebook post became about me. The poll was about me. It was not about Joan Mathis. But the intention was Joan Mathis, but it turned out to be about me and the color of my skin. Well, y'all gonna have to blame that on my mama and daddy. I had nothing to do with that, okay? So again, we had a community meeting because that's what we decided we were going to do. It was organized by Derrick Hughes because that's who got it together. The community came out because they had noticed, and the majority said to leave it the way it was. It's in my community, and yes, not just Paris, but all over, but we had people in other states talking about Renee Stone. And it wasn't even about Joan Mathis. It got away from Joan Mathis. So again, it is a dishonor to Dr. King to take his name. Paris, Texas, take away Dr. King's name from a public park. You know, that'd be the headlines for Sunday. You know, we can honor Joan Mathis, and I want to honor Joan Mathis. I'm going to continue to fight to get Joan Mathis' name honored. But I don't want to dishonor Dr. King in order to honor Joan Mathis. That is not her.
I had just a little input here on this. And, you know, I haven't had a constituent that had come to me to speak either way. But having conversations with others. I presented an idea, and again, I've, I've gotten people to say, "Well, I don't think that's a good idea," but I'm just curious what you guys would think about it. You know, Martin Luther King fought for a lot of individuals, and I think that he made an impact on all. To have Ms. Joan Mathis in the same conversation of MLK is an honor. Why should we take away from either one of them? Why, why, and I'm surprised that this hasn't been thrown out yet, but why can't we honor both of them? Wouldn't it, wouldn't it be an honor to have a park named after both individual, individuals? I mean, she is a woman. She's a woman of color. She has fought for this, for this community. So has MLK fought for our country. But why, what about if we were to connect the two? And I mean, that's from, that's from yesterday to today. And who knows, there could be someone in the future. Just an idea.
And it's not something that we could do on this agenda, Adam?
Okay, yes. I got you. I got you. Sorry about that. But I just, that was just something I felt like I wanted to say at the last meeting, but I could tell there was a little bit of interest in either way. But I just, that was something that was, I was mulling over for the last two weeks, so.
But for the purpose of tonight's meeting, we can only discuss that it be renamed MLK Junior Park? Or stay, remain that way? Or rename it Joan Mathis Park?
Yes, ma'am.
Further discussion?
May I? I can agree with Councilman Savage on the fact that you can't dishonor Dr. King. But I can say that it was disrespectful to rename that park in 1989, and there was absolutely nothing to show or monument or anything by the city or any council member that has been assigned that district at any point up until now, it's up for discussion. So that was very disrespectful. MLK Park deserved better than that. But I don't, I don't understand, I've gone for thirty years, so I wasn't aware that it was changed either until Councilman Savage and I spoke on it, then it came to our attention. I understand completely about the concept of not disrespecting Dr. King. But we've already disrespected it and, and by not even acknowledging that park was even named after him. There's trash in front of that park for days on end until Don Yarborough and wheel workers got down there and picked it up. No one else did it. So it's already disrespectful. But now we're in the process of changing the name, and I'm going to be very brief. I spoke to Ms. Mathis, and I'm not going to get into the concept of the conversation other than the fact that she said she would be honored either way. But what she did not tell me to do was to not do it. And I talked to her on two separate occasions. On one occasion, she had a Dr. King shirt on, T-shirt on. But she didn't say, Reginald, don't do it. She said, "I'd be honored if it's voted on for me to have it, and I'd be honored if it's not. Either way, I'm okay." So that made a big difference in my thought process. Because she would, if she would have said, Reginald, you all, I wish you don't do this, it had been shut down by me and I'd have pushed it out to the community. But she didn't say that. So in order to right this wrong of the disrespect, then most of the people that I talked to want the park changed. There's other, plenty of other ideas out there, but like Councilman Savage said, we'll be doing this for the rest of the year, trying to figure out the different ideas. But it's on the table to vote on it today unless we come up with something else, and that's all I have on that.
Well, I think one of the issues is certainly whether it's named Martin Luther King Junior Park or Joan Mathis Park, that we need to see the staff get a proper sign indicating which, which one that is. I believe there is already a street named after Dr. King. And that is a monumental job, doing that. So I believe he has been honored in one way there. It's something to be considered. Any more questions or discussion? All right, no further discussion. The Chair will hear a motion on this item.
I'd make the motion that we change Dr. Martin Luther King Park, located on Johnson Street, to Ms. Joan Mathis Park.
Thank you, Mr. Savage. Is there a second?
A second.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor Protem. All those in favor, it's been moved and seconded that we approve a resolution to change the name of Martin Luther King Junior Park to the Joan Mathis Park. All those in favor, please say aye. I believe that's four. All those opposed, say no.
No.
It passes four to three.
Mayor?
Yes.
Who were the three that opposed?
Councilman Pilgrim and Pankaj and Stone.
Okay, thank you.
Item number eighteen, discuss and act on a resolution confirming the city manager's appointment of Timothy De Gelder. Did I say that correctly?
Yes.
Thank you. Timothy De Gelder as the Paris Public Library Director pursuant to Section twenty-three of the Paris City Charter. Mr. Path, would you make your presentation, please?
Yes, gladly. I'm proud to present to you tonight Timothy De Gelder. As you all know, Priscilla McNally, she, she retired back in December, and so it became my task to search for a new library director. I worked with Sandy Collard HR, Chief Service Director, as well as library board members Melanie Loffmiller and Steve Hellman. Worked as interview team to interview several candidates. I am pleased to present to you Timothy tonight as my selection. He is, he's recently an English teacher from Thailand, but he served twenty-one years as a branch manager for a, for a, for a library branch up in the St. Charles City County Library District. Tons of knowledge, great depth of experience, and he has a degree that, which we require for our accreditation. But I could tell through his character, through his energy, through his excitement, he's going to do great things for our library. And so I'd like to present to you Timothy tonight for my library director position. So, if you have any questions for him, he's here to answer questions, so.
Thank you, Mr. Path. Any questions of Mr. De Gelder? Did you bring this rein with you?
No.
Thank you. All right. The Chair will hear a motion to accept Mr. Path's recommendation of Timothy De Gelder as the City of Paris Library Director.
I'll make a motion to approve the resolution to appoint Timothy De Gelder as the library director.
Thank you, Ms. Knox. A second?
Two seconds.
Two seconds. Mayor Protem and Mr. Pankaj. All those in favor of Mr. De Gelder as library director, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. It's unanimous. Welcome to Paris, Mr. De Gelder.
He will start tomorrow, actually, so.
Wow. I don't think we've ever had that happen, that I, since I've been on the council. All right. Item number nineteen is announcement of the mayor's Yard of the Month Award. I'm excited to share with everyone. Would you like to give a present? Okay. Our Director of Community Planning, Planning and Community Development and our Main Street Director, Ms. Bedford, came up with the design on this Yard of the Month sign. Would you like to give them more details?
Just a very brief presentation, thank you, Madam Mayor, Members of Council. This is the mayor's initiative. We assembled a small staff team to help put together the plans to implement this. We are excited about the opportunity to do what we can to encourage community pride through this program. This program will start, in fact, it's in play right now. The city's website has the ability for people in the community to nominate somebody's yard as Yard of the Month. We are going to award four residences in the four quadrants of the city on a monthly basis, in addition to one business at large and one industrial property at large. And then also one remodel project on somebody who's remodeled their home. And, and then that will also receive the seventh award. So these awards will begin at the next council meeting on, I believe, the thirteenth of July. And those nominations are open right now. And we just encourage the public to consider looking into the program and making a nomination. And we have a small awards nominating committee consisting of the mayor and my department, Member Sherry Bedford. And also in collaboration with Keep Paris Beautiful, Ms. Julia Crawford would be the, the third member on that small committee. We're also looking forward to having these awards acknowledged by the council member whose ward and which they fall in, and would be inviting the press to be a part of that placement of the sign. Also, the awards that will be presented here at the city council meeting by the, by the mayor once a month.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mack. I'd like to also say, letters will be sent to the winners and asking that they come to the first meeting in the, of the month, and they will receive a certificate and a gift card that's provided by Keep Paris Beautiful. And for twenty-five dollars, which will be from a local business that carries plants and gardening paraphernalia. So we do a lot to recognize with code enforcement the negative in town. I really wanted some positive reinforcement for the many, many homes that are well-kept, well-maintained, and, and beautified. So I thought this was a way to begin that recognition. We're not necessarily, these aren't big brick homes that have a lawn service take care of them. These can be very, very modest homes, but they're clean, well-kept, well-maintained, front yards clear of rubbish and that sort of thing. And we want to identify those people and say thank you to them. So, any questions about the program? You're encouraged to nominate. It's really easy. We actually received one nomination this month after the form went on the website. Other nominations were made by the Keep Paris Beautiful Board. And so we want a variety of people making nominations.
So just for clarification, where did you say this would be posted? This information, you know, where would it be advertised?
It's been put out on Facebook. It's been put out in the city's website. Keep Paris Beautiful has a website. When I went to produce the staff report, they hadn't quite put the link back to the city's website for this, but I believe that they are intending to do that. And of course, with tonight, if the paper would choose to pick up the story, that would provide additional information to the community. So that's, that's, I think, what we've got so far at this point.
All right. Thank you very much, Mr. Mack. All right, item number twenty, discuss the possibility of scheduling a city council retreat or workshop. This is for the purpose of staff and council team-building and getting a vision and planning for the goals that this council and this staff have. Two dates have been looked at. After the issue of budget is approved and in the end of September, Mr. Path and I looked at possibility of October eighth for the staff, which is a Friday, and for council, Saturday, October ninth. Or for staff, October twenty-first, a Friday, and October twenty-second for the council. I'm advocating that this would only be about a thirty-five hundred, at the most, four thousand dollar budget item. And to avoid micromanaging our staff and overworking the staff, I'm proposing that we have, let them do their job and select a consultant. They have a variety of resources to do that with. And I believe we should let them do that. The state allows for professional services up to fifty thousand dollars. And when you take a small item, three to four thousand, and you advertise, you put that item as a delay and cost more money than it would just for the staff to do their job. So any discussion or questions? Mr. Path, you have anything? Okay.
So where would this retreat be for us?
Well, a place has not been chosen. We could do it here at City Hall. We could do it in a church fellowship hall if civic center was available.
Didn't we do one, we did one a couple of years ago at the police station. Was that kind of the same?
Yeah, that was a really brief one. We also did one at the library. Was on, I don't know if you were on the council at that time, but we used, I don't know what that room at the library is called.
Community Room.
The Community Room. So.
And you're proposing the staff meet independent of the council? We don't meet together?
No, they would do their team-building and their visioning and their goal-setting on Friday, and then we would do ours on Saturday. And then see how the two meld together.
Same consultant officiates both?
Yes, yes.
I think, I think this is great. I mean, I don't know what the history of this procedure necessarily is in the past, but I know in the boards that I've worked with in the past, when we have done such a, such a procedure, such a action, I think that we've gained a lot of skill and knowledge going forward. And it's good to set your goals, both short-term, long-term, so.
Now, who would be conducting it?
The staff would choose a consultant who would be a professional that does this, for cities, maybe nonprofits, maybe boards and commissions.
We would, in that, in that case, we would bring someone before you that we recommend for you all to review and, and, and speak to before, before we actually sign a contract, so.
In my opinion, find somebody, let's, you know, bring it to us next meeting. That way, that gets it kind of, because we're going to have to get the dates figured out and stuff pretty quick moving into, we all, I guess we're doing it in the fall? Yeah, I'm, I'm okay. I mean, we're talking a couple thousand dollars, probably total cost on the deal, but I think it's something we definitely need to do. Everybody gets intermingled. There's a lot of questions that get asked and answered and stuff at those, and that's a, it was, it was a help. The little brief one that we did at the police station a couple of years ago was a huge help for me, just getting on the council. And even being on the council, I would, you know, I think it's going to help a bunch.
I think we would need to just kind of finalize our selection, then to, then make sure the individual can come to the next council meeting. But, but yeah, we can, we can work towards, we can try to aim for that as quickly, so. can try to aim for that as quickly, so.
I'm good with that.
Okay. Well, it just, it requires no action by the council, just giving direction to staff to do that, okay? I think we're going to do one more agenda item, and then I think it will be appropriate for us to take a short break. We're going to be pretty long for the rest of the agenda, so looking at item number twenty-one, discuss and act on a resolution appointing members to the Board of Adjustment. If you look at your packet, that Board of Adjust, well, in looking at that, we do not have enough applicants to fill those positions. We can, we have the choice of, we could appoint partial, and then we would have to go back and appoint another. Or if you like, we can table these appointments. Ms. Ellis can re-advertise for more applicants. I think we need some more, a few others. So, discussion, would you like to table this when we have a few, a full complement of applicants? Or go ahead and point tonight?
I think I would table it, just because if you, if somebody here wants ma, I think we have a couple duplicates.
Yeah. We've got it. If someone doesn't get seated, then maybe they may be interested in.
We have two duplicates, or two that went for other boards.
Mm-hmm. Several.
All right, I'll hear a motion to table.
Make a motion to table until we get enough applicants to make the proper board committee adjustments for the Board of Adjustment.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Pilgrim. Second, Mr. Pankaj. All right, those in favor of tabling this item to the, a certain date, what date would you like for us to do that?
I can start advertising again tomorrow, and if we get two or three more applicants, or, you know, depending on what you all do tonight, if one of these persons ends up on another board, I'll just keep you all informed.
Okay.
And when we have enough, I'll put it back on. Is that fair enough?
Okay. Does that work? Ms. Harris?
Yes, are you going to have the people who are on it who've reapplied, who are currently on the board to hold over until you do new appointments? Otherwise, your Board of Adjustments can't do business.
Yes, let, I believe we need to leave Ms. Alsobrook and Mr. Walker on until reappointments are made, okay?
Yeah.
All right, all those in favor of tabling this?
Aye.
All those opposed, say no. All right, motion carries unanimously. I'm going to take a recess right here, and do we need to vote on that, Ms. Harris?
I don't believe so.
Okay.
We can all recess. It's the chair.
Because it's going to be a pretty long agenda from here, and some of our staff, all of our staff and some of our council have come straight from work, so we're going to take about a twenty-minute break, and then we will reconvene at about six, well, let's go ahead and say six forty-five. It is six forty-seven, and I'm reconvening the meeting. We are on item number twenty-two, discuss and make appointments to the various boards and commissions. Ms. Ellis, will you go over the applicants for the PEDC board and the number of vacancies?
The applicants are Erin Barnes, Sekoi Bruce, A.J. Hoshme, Sherri Holbert, Mark Homer, Michael Nicky, Eric Roddy, and John Van Sloon. There are three vacancies on this board. Two of them are regular full-time, and there's one that is an unexpired term. And so if each of you have a ballot in front of you, and it's, you all locate it, and then if you'll write your name in the top left-hand corner, and then you'll, the person that you, is your number one person, you want to give them eight points, because there's eight applicants. And then your next person would get seven points. And if you all let me know when you have those ready, and Jean and Sandy are going to tabulate those in the conference room.
Score, and then staff will compile that.
Oh, thank you.
And make an announcement.
Janice, you did say eight, seven, six?
Yes.
Okay. Ms. Knox wasn't in here, though.
Oh, I'm sorry. It's on the, if you'll, you'll, everybody has a ballot.
Right.
And the very first one is the PEDC.
Right.
If you'll write your name in the top left-hand corner.
Okay.
And then score them. Your top pick getting eight points, your next pick will get seven points.
Just like last year.
Yes, exactly. And then Grayson's going to take them and give them to Jean and Sandy, who are tabulating them in the executive session room.
Sorry.
Okay, take your time.
So I have a question, I guess, step in, whoever. Like, these first election, I guess what you call them elections, you say somebody comes up and they're nominated for another area. Most people want this board, but just say somebody changes their mind and they get the most votes, or there's only three and there's three seats, and they want to go to that, how do we, how do we process that? Would it go to the next person with the next amount of votes?
That's what I would do. If somebody said, oh, I don't really want to be on this board, and they had seven points, I'd rather be on the other, then it would be up to y'all, and that's what I would do. I would say, okay, then we'd go to the next highest number of points.
Okay.
Okay. Do you want us to go ahead and vote on the next, on the planning and zoning while those are tall?
I think we should wait on that, because it looks like, let me double-check, we have one applicant that applied for planning and zoning that also applied for PEDC.
Okay.
So we need to wait and see if she's on that one.
Very good.
While they're tallying it.
Use the whip.
I'll go get some water. Would anybody like some water? Mom, mom?
Thank you.
Like, do you want any water?
I'm good, thank you.
Thank you, I'm good.
I've got something.
That's what I said?
Never would have done.
I gotta turn on my floodlights before I forget.
I just need to.
If yours doesn't, mine does, it sinks during the course of the.
Do we just reappoint?
Nominate them and vote on them. That'll work?
Yeah.
Hey, real quick, just for clarification, you want to house them, right?
You can confirm it? Okay. You all could go ahead on the planning and zoning and mark through number seven, Shatara Moore. She's also applied for the housing, and that's the one that she really wants on. There you go. She's number seven on that list. Pick her off?
Yes.
It's okay.
It's so hard to lead him.
Yeah, just stay there.
And since we, I'm going to ask to table that one.
Which one?
Since I'm appointed.
It's mayor's appointment.
Yes, it is.
Yes, we don't even vote on that.
No.
You're the appointee for that board.
Yeah, I'll go ahead and point the one we have.
Okay, yeah. Thank you.
Okay, Ms. Ellis?
On the PEDC, the three people with the top points were Mark Homer, A.J. Hoshme, and Eric Roddy. So, A.J. Hoshme, Mark Homer, and Eric Roddy.
Okay.
And so we'll need a motion.
I need a motion for nominate Dr. Hoshme.
Oh, are we going to do all three of them at one time? Or are we going to do it as a slate?
Stephanie?
You can do it either way.
All right, you want to do it as a slate?
I would do it as a slate.
All right, the slate for PEDC commissioners, Dr. A.J. Hoshme, Mr. Mark Homer, and Mr. Eric Roddy. All those in favor of those, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say no. That carries unanimously, and we'll move to Planning and Zoning Commission.
Now, there's not ten, there's only nine.
Let's see. Make sure, yeah, that's correct. So there's, there are nine applicants for Planning and Zoning. That's Adam Bolton, Sekoi Bruce, Laura Caffey, Michael Fulmer, David Hamilton, Miles Matthew, Francine Neely, Sims Norman, and Larry Walker. And if you all hand your, once you've scored your sheet, you'll hand that to Grayson.
You started ten?
Started at nine, because he took off Shatara Moore.
Oh, yeah, yeah, that's right. Nine, start off at nine, Shatara's not on.
Who's the other one? Eric. Yep, got him. What's next?
Go ahead and take Mark Homer off of Airport Advisory, right?
That's correct.
Yes.
Is that what, who we're doing next? Is Airport Advisory?
Yes, it is.
Ms. Ellis, alphabetize them for us. Thank you, Ms. Ellis.
You're welcome.
Well, I purposely shuffled mine, just to keep it interesting.
Did they take who off?
Take Mark Homer off of Airport.
He was elected to PEDC.
So now we've got seven. Mine looks like.
For the motion? Okay.
Well, I just want my, I just want to get, yeah, this is the kids' side down here. I guess you and Gary are on the bubble there.
Yeah, we're.
You can either be.
Yeah.
It's whenever you decide.
Depends on the mood of the day, right?
Exactly. And what we feel like letting in or not.
Yeah, if we're, if we're included.
If you're nominating the slate, you don't think?
Well, I did the best I could to vote on the nomination.
So I won't ask for a motion.
Hey, I've got a postcard. Yeah, the hiring.
Where?
Pilgrims is hiring.
Pilgrims, pride?
No, it was the chicken part.
Oh, the nominee?
The plant, yes.
That's the only job I've ever quit in my life. Pilgrims.
I've done it. I've quit. I worked half a night.
You worked your mouth off?
Yes. I worked half a night, and then the next day I came, worked half a night.
Everybody, everybody's man is darn cold and wet.
Cold and wet.
Yeah.
Now, that got me. I said, damn, look at all these people with these sharp knives.
How many of them? Resting with those with my, girl or whatever. And they'd be with, good one out there in the parking lot, I'd see one like once, twice a year. Those knives. At every plant.
They're like that, man.
We had twenty, we had twenty, like Mount Pleasant, so we had four, five, you know, to order.
The chicken part of Campbell's Soup located out just in Sumter, South Carolina, where my father-in-law lives. And he went out there, he left Campbell's Soup here and went to Sumter, South Carolina and he and his wife now are, she was one of those that wielded the knife deftly in the and he didn't, he was a maintenance fella and he, he was stuck with the safer tools.
It wasn't about that one.
But she had, oh, man.
The worst, the worst job at that whole company, out of everything that I did in winter, we did it all, was catching chickens.
Oh, really?
Yeah. My dad decides a company, special projects, basically when something blew up three years ago, three months ago, we'd be in Natchez, Louisiana. At Katrina, we were down there. See, Cinco de Mayo, we're all, maybe guys, we ain't working today, but everybody that does it, there ain't nobody, I mean, and stuff like that, at last. And so I heard, had to look over there and a bunch of us, and we caught chickens, and it's pretty complicated. And all the football boys, I went there, I said, I don't think you understand exactly what you're doing. They were a little windy by that, because you don't start till the hard, you start till about.
So what happened to the chickens, did they like get out? Where do you catch them?
You go in the chicken house, you work your way from the back and you pick them. Birds weigh nine pounds a piece.
Wow.
And you put them in, you put them in the cages and they're.
So they get out of the, they get out of the cages, is what you're saying? Lord have mercy, I'm still not catching it.
I can't catch, I can't catch my own daughter, so.
I'm not understanding.
She can't even walk out.
So they just, yeah, they just hold out, they just lay where, they just go wherever they want to. Oh, okay, and you had to go pick them and, and catch them and.
You can push them as you go through the family.
Yeah.
You got a full flip operator to bring any of them to cages, you ever seen them on trucks going down the highway?
Yes.
They catch them. Especially in land.
I see.
So, you, they still can't catch them today. They try to make some kind of, that's worse, that's the worst job out there that I've done.
Was it because they, they run from you and you have to chase them? Or is it because they, or they peck your hands when they, you catch them and they like? Oh, yeah.
It's the worst workout in the world.
These two are the longest ones. These two boards are the longest.
And they can't see.
They're way up there. They all your fingers and toes.
That's the only job I ever quit. You do what?
Gee.
Hey, so, is it true that if the chickens are overweight, you have to destroy them?
You put them on a treadmill.
No, they catch them, they caught twelve pound chickens. The problem with the over time birds is. Breasts and things, so they'll, they'll grind in, they'll go soup or they'll go to dog food or it'll go to ground.
But they can't, they can't sell it like.
Oh, yeah, you sell it.
Yeah, but you can't sell it like, no, I know my brother worked there, um, two, three years ago.
Perun, perun birds.
But he said the oversized ones, they, they couldn't run, I don't know what line he was on, but he said they couldn't over through there. It had a waist, limited max.
Well, the west, in the west plant, in prepared foods, which is all the west plant.
I didn't get it till late.
Chick-fil-A, KFC, some windows, that was produced out there.
Yeah.
Some chick-fil-A, they buy, they buy small bird of the year, they don't sell by the, they don't sell by pound, they sell by. They don't need a big, they can't seem to want a big breast.
And Wednesday, yes.
Right, oh, yeah. So they want that four and a half pound bird, so there is a weight here, it goes over.
Okay.
It goes to lunch. Lunch meat, our fooders.
Oh, I know, everything, when, when I was there, everything went somewhere. You had a bucket for everything served. Because I was messing up a lot.
We were, we were. We got everyone to.
Chicken feet?
A feet itself.
Oh, yeah. Lots of places, oh, yeah.
It really, it is, really.
Yeah.
That's something here, too.
They did, they did, it's come over here. For years you couldn't sell because of contamination.
I came down that.
No.
Used to give chicken wings away.
I think it's called a claw.
What is here?
It's a claw, it's a.
Really?
Tiger or a dog. I love wings, that's my favorite.
Half a bean, it was probably.
Yeah.
Yes.
Really?
Chicken, about the chicken. It's almost all going to deep.
Right.
The lunch made.
Chicken tenders.
Chicken, deli makes it, it's better to me.
It does.
Used to, how it fly off, they're in a wing shortage and that, you know, it's, it's just the.
I'm like, I, wings wasn't my favorite growing up, but now wings is the only part I want, really.
It's a, it's a, you know, you should go to, and there's so many places that cook them, I might go and buy some. I still do bone in, I've got grandma, my grandmother fried chicken.
Grayson came out.
I'll put it against anything, it's unreal. And then we do smoke.
Oh, because this is the.
Buttered fried and smoked chicken.
And so they're going over and going over.
Little fryer, three and a half, four pound fryer, that's the best, man, they're doing. But, no, a lot of them, they cost a twelve and a half pound, they're the farm. They had to let them go.
I thought it's called hens. Those hens?
We have a half pound chicken.
I thought those were called hens.
They're growing, they've been growing a nine pound bird for a long time. Really? In the smaller chicken houses, though, the older houses, like around Pittsburgh complex, I mean, you're a maggot, everything's pretty new. We're filming, starting in Pittsburgh, all that complex is still kind of, the houses are older. So the smaller houses, they grow the smaller birds and that's why they converted that west plant. We, I was growing up, that's all, chicken fillets. Every, every piece of chicken you ate at Chick-fil-A, that's why.
Is that?
Ah, good problem.
Wow.
Mm-hmm, thank you. Okay. Okay, on planning and zoning, we had two vacancies and the two persons with the most number of points are Sims Norman and Francine Neely.
All right, as a slate, would someone like to nominate those two?
I'll nominate them.
Thank you.
Sims Norman and Francine Neely for planning and zoning.
All right, and city attorney tells me we do not need a, a motion and a second. They've been nominated. All those in favor of Fran Neely and Sims Norman, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. Unanimous. Can Ms. Ellis?
Okay. The next board is our Airport Advisory Board and you all have marked off Mark Homer. So that means you have seven applicants and if you'll make sure and put your, your name in the top left-hand corner. Grayson.
Sorry for the errors. Next one's gonna be pretty.
Ban commission?
One, two. One, two. Saying, since there's already. Since there's only two on ban commission, can't we go ahead and appoint?
But what if, what if Cleon's preference is building in standards, or do we know?
Well, since she's currently on there, I don't know.
They listed, I think they listed a preference.
Isn't she currently on?
She is currently on the ban.
Ban commission.
But I just wanted to see what her preference was on the list.
Let's look at our applications.
Do you have one of these? Do you have a copy of the applications?
I do, I haven't went through it.
Oh, great. That's right, that's good, we don't, yeah, she needs something to do.
Her preference, her first preference was building in standards and her second was banned.
Oh, okay, yeah.
Well, we can vote to table this until we have more applications, although I think historically, has this been one that we have difficulty getting?
Yes.
You might want to go ahead and do building in standards and come back to it.
Okay, I think that's a good suggestion. City attorney has suggested we go ahead with building in standards and if she's not appointed to that board, then we could do the ban commission.
Got a question, uh, is, are these one of the boards that you can serve on two boards or no?
No, you cannot, no.
They're not, okay.
And the, there's people on the building in standards, if you all look, that have applied for other boards, but you have already selected those with the exception of the band. So they can stay on this ballot.
Okay.
We're gonna switch, building in standards is where we're going next?
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you.
I believe Building and Standards Commission, do they meet at noon?
Building and Standards meets at three thirty on.
Three thirty? I knew it was some unusual time. Board of Adjustment meets at noon, okay. So that, but Ms. Ellis included that information with the applications, so people who apply know what time those, those committee meetings are.
If you all have already have your ballots ready, I can take them up and I can give them to the group that's.
All right, Building and Standards.
One right there.
Thank you.
Well, that only left Cleon Drake and Pat Conrad for the, what we could do.
Commission.
He only left her and. Only left this one. This, there was only two left after we crossed out.
We didn't cross it anywhere else.
Oh, okay, okay.
Getting ready for the airport board.
You could ride your bicycle.
That's right. Okay.
On the airport board, we had three vacancies. The persons that got the most votes are Bill Allen, Jim Bell and Leandra Mahon.
Bill Allen, this is Airport Advisory?
Yes.
Bill Allen, who else?
Nathan, Jim Bell.
Nathan, Jim Bell and Leandra Mahon.
Would someone make a nomination of those?
I'll make a nomination. I nominate those individuals, all three of them, Bill K. Allen, Jim Bell and Leandra Mahon.
Yes.
All those in favor, all those in favor of that slate, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say no. That's unanimous.
Thank you.
And they, now we're waiting on the ban commission, they have that ballot, correct?
They have the building in standards.
Oh, building standards.
So, Mark Francine off the library board.
Guess who? So that leaves a vacancy.
That's Deette. He's a good one. I like Deette. Okay, here we go. Okay, thank you. Okay, for the building and standards, the two persons with the most points are Adam Bolton and Pat Conrad.
All right, would someone nominate that slate, please?
I nominate that slate, Pat Conrad and Adam Bolton to the Building and Standards Commission.
Thank you, all those in favor of that slate, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. Carries unanimously. And now we can go back and do the ban commission.
Yes.
All right.
Two vacancies, I nominate Lucia Bunch and Cleon Drake, did I say that right?
Two vacancies. I nominate Lucia Bunch and Cleon Drake. Did I say that right?
Okay.
To the band commission.
Thank you. All those in favor of Lucia Bunch and Cleon Drake, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. Historic preservation commission, it's important that Ms. Emmett receive consideration on this because she's the representative for Main Street, and they need a, a member of that on the HPC.
Mayor?
Yes.
Also, Ms. Kathy, who's also applied, she's an architect, and you have to, or the bylaws for the historic preservation commission requires an architect also be on the committee.
So, there's four vacancies, right? And there's three applicants?
That's correct.
We can just.
You have to determine which are gonna be your alternates, and which are gonna be your primary board members.
They have not had an alternate in the past, is that correct?
That is correct.
So we could go with one alternate, and, who would need to be Ms. Holtman, because they need Ms. Emmett from Main Street and Laura Kathy as architect.
I'll make that motion.
Okay.
If that's appropriate at this point.
I believe it is. Nomination for Laura Kathy and Glee Emmett as members of the historic preservation commission, and Jessica Holtman as the alternative, alternate. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Those opposed, no. Motion carries unanimously. Mr. Pat, there's my ballot. Okay, library advisory board.
So Francine is on P.
P and Z.
P and Z.
That's right. So we have, we have one vacancy, and we have one applicant, and that's Diette Cobb.
That's it.
I'll nominate Diette for library board.
All those in favor of Diette Cobb for library advisory board, say aye. All those opposed, no. Unanimous. If you can't meet on Wednesday afternoon, we're playing Mahjong. Main Street advisory board.
Now, Leandra was selected to the airport advisory board, so that leaves two vacancies and two applicants.
Could you refresh my memory, what was her, what was her first preference?
On Leandra?
Mm-hmm.
It was Main Street.
So she can kind of technically go into the running for this, is that correct?
She's already been elected on another board.
Okay, okay. So, so, once she's, she's done, she's done, okay.
And as you know, you're often not selected for the first board you choose, or even for the first time chosen for any board.
Right.
It, you know, getting your name out there sometimes is, is what it takes.
Which one are we doing now?
So you have two nominees for, or two candidates for two vacancies.
All right. So.
I'll nominate Don Yarborough and Shelby Gillum. Am I saying that right?
Shelby Gillum and Don Yarborough, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Unanimous for Shelby Gillum and Don Yarborough. Traffic commission.
Okay.
I don't have a traffic commission.
I don't either.
There's, because it's only one person?
That's right, there's only, we have one applicant, there's two vacancies on the traffic commission.
All right, I will entertain a motion to table that until we have more applicants.
I'll make a motion to table until we have more applicants for the traffic commission.
Thank you, Mr. Pilgrim, a second.
I'll second.
Mr. Pankash, it's been moved and seconded to table this until more applicants are available. All those say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. That is tabled until most applicants come in.
Correct.
All right.
Okay.
We have board of adjustment, correct?
It was tabled.
Oh, that's right, I'm sorry.
Yeah, we have two tables, the traffic and BOA.
Yes. You have that with the names on it.
Oh, yeah, 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 yeah.
Maybe somewhere?
I do choose somewhere, but I don't think it's with everything else. We are going to advertise for more applicants for the housing authority. The mayor appoints those positions, and currently Shatara Moore is the only applicant, so I am appointing Shatara Moore to the housing authority of the city of Paris.
Okay.
And if you'll advertise for more applicants.
Sure, well.
And if you, as council members, if you know someone in your district who might be willing to serve and, on that board.
I've just got a question for, I guess, Stephanie. I don't know who should answer this. So, they have to have one person that's living in the housing authorities on that board. Can they have two?
I don't see why not.
Yeah, just be a citizen, right?
It's just, yeah, I mean, you have to have one, but you could certainly have more than one.
Okay, okay.
It's not a limitation, it's a requirement.
Requirement, yeah.
Any further questions? Item number 23, discuss and appoint city council members to serve as liaisons to the various boards and commissions. And we have this past year had a number of boards and commissions that had no council liaison, or no council liaison that was able to attend. So, Ms. Ellis has provided us on the application page, the meeting location, the meeting time, and their regular meeting day. So, if you are going to ask for a particular board, if you would please make sure that that works with your, your general schedule. Nobody is, is taking attendance and, and gonna kick you off, but all of our boards and commissions are important, and I think we can show the volunteers that we appreciate them by, by showing up. So, I'm, I would like to start, just go in the order that we have, and raise your hand if you, that's something you want. If there's more than one, we will not, I'll appoint one, and then we'll come back to it if we've filled every board and commission, and, and let two be a member, a, a council liaison. Is that?
We don't have a choice to stay on the board we're on?
Well.
See it last year.
I, I think if, if you have enough, that we've covered everybody originally with one, and that, and obviously, we have more commissions than we have council. So, several people will need to do two boards. So you, if, if you do two boards, that's twice the amount of time. But I've, I've currently been going to three and four board meetings a month, and as mayor, I'm ex officio of several of those, so I'm not, I'm not gonna take one of these as a council liaison unless we need it to be covered.
Well, I wanna keep my.
Well, we're, we're gonna start with the airport advisory board. Ms. Knox, is anyone else interested in that? They meet on the third Thursday of the month at 5:30 PM. I've been, I've been involved with that board for six years, so that should come readily to me. All right. Band commission, and this is one that no one, unless, I think Mayor Clifford volunteered because he's a part of the band, and, and did that. So, is there anyone who would do band commission? What time do they meet?
They don't meet very often.
Okay. Do you have that on here?
Let's see.
Is it random?
It was a quarterly meeting time, T D A.
All right. No volunteers. Okay. No doubling up, though, till we have all of them done. Building and standards commission.
I'll, I'm the liaison for that now, so.
Would you like to stay there?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Historic preservation commission. Ms. Knox?
But that would be a double up. In your.
She's over at airport.
Yeah, okay. You, you wanna choose, or wait and see if we?
Wait and see.
Okay, 'cause nobody else is raising their hand either.
Yeah, so there.
I got my little areas.
Okay. Housing authority board.
We can't choose housing authority by state law, we're prohibited from doing that.
Okay, no council liaison.
No, no council liaison for the housing authority.
All right.
Check on them from time to time.
Okay, that's good.
Just, just as a drop in, library advisory board. All right. Main Street advisory board, I've been doing that because they didn't have one. That is a very important board. They bring a lot of visitors to this city. All right. P E D C.
I'm gonna stay on.
Three members, three volunteers.
I'm just gonna continue to stay.
As the newbie, I would like to be considered, especially with my time served, especially with budgeting and everything, and I've made contacts with considerable, considerable amount of companies that are actually still in contention to come here. So, I just stating my argument, with all due respect to everyone.
Well, Mr. Pilgrim, I'm, I'm gonna appoint you because I think maybe fresh eyes to the board, okay? If, and I'll appoint a second one if we get through all these others, okay?
How does that work, Mayor? I mean, how do, I didn't know you appointed the, how do, I mean, I'm just asking, how does it work for you to, 'cause Mayor Protim got to keep his position 'cause he wanted, nobody else wanted to do it. So how do you determine which one of us you appoint?
Well, I just.
I mean, is that, is that your position to appoint?
Well, it's a volunteer thing.
Right.
And I'm saying, all of our boards and commissions are important, and that we need every one of them covered before we start doing two for each board.
Right, but you appointed one of us, how did you choose which one to appoint?
I have seen the board and the executive director seek Mr. Pilgrim out for.
That's being biased. I don't think that's fair. I mean, I'm just, you know, I'm for what's right, you know, so I, I don't think, that's being biased, and that's not fair. I know you appoint housing authority, 'cause that's what we do, but on this, because I said I wanted to run, 'cause I'm learning it, I want to be a part of the E D C, and for you to appoint somebody, that's being totally biased, and that's, it's not right. I'm just, I don't know, ask, I don't know. Stephanie?
Well, I mean, it's, it's an appointment.
It's not an appointment, it's a volunteer, correct?
Discuss and appoint city council members to serve as liaisons to the various boards and commissions. I would assume that the appointment authority would lie with the mayor as chair of meeting. You know, you are a council, you could also do that as a vote if you want to, but I'm reading this agenda item as being an appointment in the power of the mayor.
I mean, what does the law say? I guess we just, what does the law say?
Well, the, the city council is, is the arbiter of its own policies and procedures. There's not a state law that says how you.
I'm just saying, it just shows bias, you know, because she feels, that's, she feels that he should be it. I mean, like I said, there's Mahir, there's me. I, I may not have as much experience, but I'm, I attend the meetings, you know, I, I, so they can't say I don't attend. I try to participate, and I may not know as much, but I'm still learning. So I don't think, I just feel like it's showing bias toward your favorite, is what I'm saying.
Well, that would be, that would be true of any appointment to any procedure.
But we're all being volunteering, though.
Yeah, but if it's an appointment, that's what it, that's what it means. It's been volunteered because there has not been more than one person wanting to, to be in that position. So, you could say that about any appointment, since there is more than one person wanting this particular board, I would say it's within the power of the mayor to make that appointment.
And I'm saying that when we have all these slots filled, we can go back if, if there's need, needs to be a, a second member. But we're gonna fill all the spots we can fill first, because all of our boards and commissions are important.
Yeah, oh, no doubt. I'm just, is, I don't, just for the record, I don't, I think you're showing bias, it's not fair. I just want that for the record, and we can go on.
Thank you. Planning and zoning commission.
I've served on that also, so I don't mind putting my name for that also. I mean, that's fine.
I'll put my name too, in case Mahir, I'd like to serve there.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah, we, are we able to have two, or is that, otherwise?
Well, we can, but not until every, everybody has filled. Mahir spoke first, but Gary, if you want, you want that?
If you want first position, yeah, go for it. I mean.
I, I wouldn't mind serving that.
More than happy.
Thank you. Traffic commission, this one only meets a few times a year, when there's something that needs to, like a stop sign added somewhere.
Well, I'm also on the traffic commission as well.
Would you like to stay there?
Yes.
Well, we're about at the end, we'll see. Board of adjustment, this is a very important board. They do meet at an odd time. As needed.
But at noon on a Tuesday.
It's at noon on Tuesdays, so that would put some of you out. I will take board of adjustment. All right, we still need to fill, we have Ms. Knox on the airport board, Mayor Protim Hughes on building and standards, one, two, Clayton Pilgrim on P E D C, Mr. Savage on planning and zoning, board of adjustment, the mayor. Ms. Stone, would you like to pick one?
What's left?
Band commission. Library advisory board.
Hey, greeting.
Main Street advisory board. When does that meet? That meets at 4:30. Traffic commission.
Well, I mean, I could back off if it, you know, makes it easier for you to get on something. I mean, they don't meet that often either.
But do they meet during, what kind of hours?
Like 5:30 at the police station.
It is recorded 5:15.
Okay. Ms. Stone, would you like that one?
Yeah, what day is it? I'm trying.
It's the first Tuesday of the month, and they meet at 5:15.
5:15, okay.
And it's, they met last month, and it was the first meeting they'd had since December.
Since December, yeah.
No, nobody's on the band?
No.
I'm, I'll do, the band only meets quarterly, right?
Yes.
Okay.
I'm gonna have the band out.
Thank you, Mr. Pilgrim. All right. Library advisory board. Come on, we got the new library director here. Let's show some support for him. All right, I'll take the library board. Main Street advisory board, this is a very important board.
You're taking traffic?
Yeah.
So, I can do that one?
I can, I'm interested, but I just, I fear that it might be a conflict if I were to be a liaison due to my occupation. I don't know if legally if that is correct or not, but if it isn't, then I'm more than happy.
To which one?
Main Street.
Main Street, I don't see that.
I don't see that as a conflict.
That's like the pumpkin festival and wine fest.
He will be an enhancer.
He will be an enhancement. He would be an enhancement.
I did it my first, my first term, and it's, it's pretty interesting.
It's a good, it's a great committee.
I will take it on, I'm excited.
It's a working board, they're great.
I'm a working man.
Thank you for volunteering.
He's volunteering as an enhancement.
All right. We have-
Historic Preservation Commission.
Historic Preservation Commission. Ms. Knox?
Yes, ma'am.
You already have one?
You have another choice?
Historic Preservation Commission, yes, ma'am, please.
Okay. Thank you. Mr. Pilgrim is on two already. Mayor Protem Hughes, do you have a, another one you would like to serve on?
What, what do we have left? What do we have left?
You're on Building and Standards. We have Library, Main Street, E D C, Planning and Zoning, Traffic, Board of Adjustment, if you, if you want a second one.
Main Street.
Main Street?
Let's do it.
Okay.
We'll have a good time.
Okay.
They want us to band with me twice, come on.
I would appreciate that.
We have a concert now.
So, that'll be on Main Street.
Stone, you have a second choice?
E D C.
Mr. Savage, do you have a second choice?
No, I do not.
Okay. Mr. Pankaj, do you have a second choice?
Obviously, my second choice, my first choice would have been E D C, but I don't wanna disrespect here, that's, that's okay. These folks have served, and they're in that position, and hopefully I'll get my opportunity to serve next time then. Um, you know, Planning and Zoning has been at the forefront of my position here. I would love to be able to serve alongside Gary, and let me ask you this, in terms of these liaison, um, positions, would it, would it hold against someone to go ahead and still attend the meeting and still be informed of that board? Because, like I said, I think it would be a detriment to the position of the, of the E D C with the connections that I've made, especially during the interim of not having an executive director whenever I've helped lead it, but-
Certainly, you're entitled to attend. Uh, we, I think we are regularly, as a matter of course now, doing a notice of possible quorum for that particular board, anyway.
Then that's fine, I mean, I have no problem with that at all. I'm, I'm happy to serve wherever I'm needed.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
And I would say, I, I think, I think P D C's the only one we are, we are regularly advertising, and so if, if anyone who's not a liaison for another board wants to attend another meeting, please let Janice know, so that in case we have multiple individuals wanting to attend the other boards, we can, we can advertise.
Any other considerations? All right.
Mayor?
Yes?
We, we also have the Artex Council of Government, and the bylaws require that a member of the city council serve, which has routinely been the mayor. Also, they allow a member of the council to serve on the executive committee to that board.
I'll be interested in that, too.
Okay.
Any other interest in that?
When, when do they meet?
I don't have that information, I'm sorry.
It's in Tyler. It's out of town?
Yes, it is out of town.
Yeah. I got enough. I'm interested.
I'm, I'm out. I think, if someone else has more passion, then go for it.
Ms. Stone, are you interested?
I'm around too, so I don't, probably not then. You sure you don't want?
Um, I got enough.
Well, I mean, if you have hesitation, I, I'm more than happy to serve if that, if that's the case.
I think, they, they meet what, twice a year?
No, they're not very often. We, they just send us an agenda, I don't have a certain time on the calendar marked.
I'm more than happy to serve if, if-
All right. Okay, so I'll give them your name along with the mayor.
And Kaj as a member of the committee?
Yes, on the executive committee.
And mayor to the COG, right?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Okay, and then we have visitors and convention council, which requires the mayor, the city manager, and one council member.
So, I have a question on that, because I'm already, I'm already a board member for that, could I still keep my position from the V C C being an integral part of that V N, V N C C? I know we, we had a communication on this.
We did, and I said I would think about it, and then I promptly did not think very hard about that.
It's okay. I mean, I don't, I still don't think it would oppose, I don't think it would put us in a position of having a quorum, per se, if, because many times Paula and I have been there, if someone else were to join, this is three, so I don't think that it would be.
Well, if you've got four people, whether you're serving in, as, in a capacity, as a member of that board, or as a city council, you've got a quorum of the city council.
Sure.
Sure, sure.
But it's, if, that's if there's four, correct?
Yes.
But if we were, if I've already, if I already stayed on there as a board member, not as a city council representative, but the mayor's there, it still makes two, though.
That's, but that's not a quorum, so you're-
Exactly, so we're okay.
And mayor is an ex officio, and then council liaison.
Right. So you don't have, I guess technically you don't have a vote on that, is that correct?
I don't have a vote.
Okay. See, I, I end up having a vote, so then I guess, does the city councilor end up having a vote, or are they?
No. Liaison does not vote.
Okay. Oh, yeah, that's true.
So, I really, I really think it'd be better if somebody else did it, if anybody wants it.
I agree. I'll just stay on as my board seat, if that's okay, Stephanie.
But now we don't have a volunteer to be liaison.
V N C C, visitors and convention council, it'd be good for Main Street, or Main Street. But that, that is a, that is a hard one, I'll tell you, because it's a very, that's one you have to stay on top of, V N C C, 'cause there's a lot of events that come through now.
And a lot of money.
A lot of money.
A lot of taxpayers' money.
Yeah.
Hot tax, yeah.
No volunteers? What time do they meet, please?
Four o'clock, third Monday?
That's a tough one for-
The second or third Monday? I can't quite recall.
It was last week, I'm pretty sure.
Oh, and the third.
Third Monday.
Yeah.
Four o'clock.
Four o'clock. There has not been a, I was council liaison, and then I went on as ex officio, so that'll remain open.
Yeah, it's true.
Okay, we also have one more, and that's the Love Civic Center Board, which requires a council member to serve as ex officio to that board.
Maybe like at 1:30 or four o'clock. No, I can't, the time's like 4:30.
I think so.
What days do they meet?
I'm sorry, I don't have it.
Oh, that's okay.
They meet quarterly.
That's right.
They meet quarterly, and everything, I've conned this, it's, it's like they're over just as you get there. They're very fast meetings, they're super quick.
Are you volunteering?
No, I'm not. It was hard for me to figure out when they were meeting and get there on time, because, like I said, by the time I got there, they were finished, so, yeah.
I'm happy to serve in that capacity, I don't mind.
Thank you. Appreciate it. All right, Ms. Ellis, is that all?
That concludes.
Okay. Item 24, discuss and act on Paris Economic Development Corporation's budget for fiscal year 2021 and 2022. Ms. Hammond?
Mayor, members of council, thank you for allowing me to be here tonight. Um, as some background, the P E D C, we held our annual meeting last month. During that meeting, we reviewed our annual budget, and that was approved, so that is what you have before you today. Pursuant to our bylaws, I thought I would present the budget, hit the high points, and then we are respectfully requesting your consideration and approval of this budget. Is that okay? Just to hit the high points, and then we can open it, open it for Q and A. So this year, we've added something different. At the very top, you'll see our cash and investments. We thought it was good to show a snapshot of where we are today, so we have about 4 million in cash and investments today. Moving down to the actual budget, we are estimating revenue of 1.7 million for this coming year. There was a lot of discussion at our board meeting, and the consensus was to reflect income consistent with current revenue trends. If we continue tracking the way we are to date, we could end up with about 1.8 million in revenue at the end of this fiscal year. Jumping down to expenses, you'll see our total personnel expenses are sitting at 7% higher compared to last year. That represents cost of living increase that has not been done in years, as well as merit increases for my staff, not me. Jumping to total administration, that's down 4%, no significant changes in that category. Flipping over to page two, you'll see total marketing and promotion, that line item is staying the same at 130,000. You know, we've earmarked a couple of items, you'll see 10,000 for business retention and expansion, and then 20,000 for brand discovery and website. So our total operating expenses are 2% higher compared to last year. Then the next category, job training, incentives, and our debt, so you'll see under job training, we've kept that at 25,000, no change there. Dropping to direct business incentives, that is sitting at 1.7 million roughly, so it's 29% less than last year. So the incentives represent actual contractual obligations that we have today, plus, we've allocated $500,000 for projects that may emerge throughout the year, so that we have something budgeted. On page three, you'll see our debt service. So the first two items, we have a loan out for the Gene Stallings Business Park, as well as American Spiral Well Loan. Those numbers just reflect actual numbers based on our amortization schedules. And the third item, you'll see a land loan. So we've talked about acquiring land, we established that land committee earlier, and actually in February of this year. That committee is still working on some options. We hope to present those to the board, and then, of course, to city council. I think that should happen in the next 60 days. We expect, hopefully, the sale to occur by the end of the year, but all of that's really up in the air at this point, but we did want to allocate some funds towards that, so we've projected 1.9 million dollars for the acquisition of land. That's based on a 20-year loan at 3%. So moving on to new industry projects, you'll see that that line item is down 71%. Last year, the board had budgeted for clearing of all of our industrial sites, that took place, so moving forward, we don't anticipate those expenses to be that high. So we budgeted 120,000 for the year there. So total budget expenses are 2,649,873. That is 25% less than last year. When you look at our income, we're looking at a deficit of about a million dollars. I think it's worth pointing out that if you take the American Spiral Well incentive out, we would have a balanced budget. That's all I had, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Maureen, I have one quick question. The only question that I really have is, I saw that there was a $2,000 increase on the Hudamarky rail, which I wasn't sure about, I was just curious.
So the actual contract is 402,000?
Got you. And then, aside from that, I will make a comment. I am very happy to see the attraction recruitment projects portion of that, that is cleaned up, and I will say, from the year previous, whenever I presented this budget, it was a little funky, so I'm glad y'all cleaned that up. We didn't have much direction, so we just worked with what we had, but that is good. Otherwise, I'm also making one more comment, the estimated income is reflected correctly, I think that's good, because we weren't reflecting that last year either. I mean, I think we were kind of just thinking it's chalk it up to COVID, but that's smart, and that's a good, that's a good bar to, to weigh yourself on, so, yeah. Otherwise, I have no other, no other comments or questions, I think it's presented well.
Thank you.
I think you've done a good job of, of keeping expenses down compared to last year, as well as the American Spiral Well, we knew at the time that we were pretty much giving away the farm, but that it was just an incredible company, and I think when you drive by that place on the loop, and you see what is, is built there now, it's come to pass, it's, it's worth what we did. It was worth the risk.
Fantastic project, by the way, so congratulations to you all. I, I do believe they'll hit 100 by the end of the year, and so that million would then come due, and be off of our books, but what a great investment.
Any other questions of Ms. Hammond, or discussion, or comments?
I think you've done a great job, so I appreciate your efforts.
Thank you, councilor.
All right. No more questions or comments. I'll hear a motion to approve P E D C's budget for fiscal year 2021, 2022.
I'll make a motion to approve the budget.
Mr. Mahir, thank you, a second. Ms. Knox, all those in favor of the P E D C budget as presented, please say aye.
Aye.
Those who say no, motion carries unanimously. Item number 25, consider and approve future events for city council and/or city staff pursuant to resolution number 2004-081. Does anyone have any items? Item number 26, is there a motion for adjournment?
So move.
Second, approved.
Was that everybody? It was.
I didn't say anything.